Okay. Good morning. I'd like to call this meeting to order, and we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And Lacy, if you could lead us with the pledge, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Lacy. Okay, adoption of the agenda, item B.
Mr. Chairman, I will go ahead and move that we adopt the agenda as posted and deliver, and allow chair to deviate as necessary.
Second.
I have a motion and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Aye.
Item C, call to the public, and we're going to start with Ed Gaines. And Lacy.
Good morning. My name is Ed Gaines, and I'm here as the Vice President of the Santa Cruz County Fair and Rodeo Association. And you all know Lacy, who's our wonderful manager. She does all the heavy lifting. I've not met any of you all before, but I've been a resident of this county for 23 years, primarily in Sonora and Patagonia area. And we're here to talk a little bit about the fairgrounds and thank you for your support, financially and otherwise, particularly through these last three years. With COVID, I mean, it's been a wild ride, but we're doing well, and we appreciate your support. We like to think of the fairgrounds as part of the heart and soul of this county, in this community. I mean, we have quinceañeras, we have weddings, we have funerals or memorials, times of crisis, firefighters, community, in addition to all the equine and agricultural and livestock events that we do. And I'm just, we've got a great board. I've been on a lot of philanthropic boards in my 40 professional years, but this is the best board I've ever been on. We don't always agree, but everyone has what's best for this community and this county in their heart, and we discuss it and move on down the road. Again, my thanks for your support, and particularly financially. We have some events coming up, and we'd like to invite everybody to these events. We've got our rodeo, 107th year rodeo on Labor Day weekend. We have a SALA event, which is Southern Arizona Livestock. It's a huge event. It's really a family event. These kids bring their livestock, pigs, goats, sheep, whatever, beef. And the last event, I don't think I could have seen how anybody could get another RV into any spot on the fairgrounds. I mean, it's just remarkable, and it's so much fun to see these kids with their out-of-control pigs running across the fairgrounds with the stick that they use to control them. We also have our fair, what's that? That's the 16th, right?
16th, 17th.
Yeah, and so, and then on top of that, we have all these other equine events, ropings, horsey events. We have the 83rd Annual American Quarter Horse Association event in the middle of October. I wish I could remember the precise date, but that's a long time. Actually, the first event was the year before the AQHA was incorporated, and it's the largest breed register, I think, in the world. And so, we're privileged to do that. You know, all these events, it's fun for the participants, it helps us have some meaning, but it really helps the community, and it doesn't matter, the restaurants, the wineries, the shops, the B&amp;Bs, they load up. And so, we really appreciate your support, and I'm sure Lacy has something she wants to say as well, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. This is called to the public. We don't get to ask you questions, but thank you for everything that you guys do out there. Okay, is there anybody online or on the phone that would like to address the board? The only person I see is Rudy, Supervisor Malarra, so we'll move on to current events. And we will start with Supervisor Malarra. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. I just have one or two items to report. One, I hope everyone had a nice Fourth of July yesterday, nice and safe Fourth of July. Secondly, I, the state finally finished out their budget for the year, and we got unfortunately hit with some more unfunded mandates. Altechs really went up drastically, and basically all to the tune of $570,000. So, it's not, it wasn't a good team effort with the state this year, unfortunately. So, we're going to lobby hard next year to try and get some of those back. And that's all I have to report, sir.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, my condolences to the Parra family. Mrs. Parra passed away last week, and I want to send out her prayers and thoughts to the family and the loss of Mrs. Parra. Other than that, I know it was a fun weekend. It was good to see the fireworks were back after almost a two-year layoff, and I know that we continue to see cases of COVID. The good thing is that it's not as vicious as it has been. I haven't seen any new deaths, so that's good. But, you know, if you go out, you know, make sure you stay safe, and at least wash your hands, and if not, and if you want to cover your face, you don't feel too comfortable, go ahead and do that. That way, you take care of yourself and your family. That's all I have to report, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Like to start off with condolences to Yapaque County. They lost a sheriff officer last week, Richard Lopez, tragedies. So, from our county to their county, our heartfelt condolences. Also passings this week, Jim Cumming passed away this last weekend, so our hearts, our thoughts go and prayers go to the Cummings family. I had the opportunity to attend a Port Authority meeting, and I wish I could read my handwriting at this point, but I can't. So, people who don't know, Supervisor Malarra was talking about Altech and the different state mandates. Altech is there as in a long-term care system. It's so, it's what the counties pay to take care of indigent people in our community. So, unfortunately, when the state doesn't cover that bill, then we are left covering that bill. And that is, oh, I could finally read my handwriting. I had the opportunity, took my second visit to the mine site in Patagonia. I went with representatives from Kirsten Sinema's office and also the State Director for Senator Kelly's office, and so, that's what I had to report. Madam Manager.
Good morning. As you all have mentioned, I have been busy wrapping up the legislative session and understanding how the bills affect Santa Cruz County. Also, at the same time, we're preparing for the next legislative session with our county proposals that are due to CSA on August 15th. We closed out the fiscal year '22, and most importantly, Mr. Chavez will bring before you a balanced budget later in this agenda. Our Elections Department, specifically Alma Schultz, passed her first Logics and Accuracy test for the primaries, so the Secretary of State was out, and we passed that again this year. And also, over the last two weeks, I've been planning the CSA Summit, which Santa Cruz County is cosponsoring this year. So, that's all I have to report.
With Pima County. That's good. Thank you very much. Item E, Department Reports and Activities. Maricio, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Good morning.
All right. The Cash and Investment Report. The General Fund has an overall balance of $17,807,961, with an investment amount of just a little bit over $10 million. The Road Fund has an overall balance of $573,748, with an investment amount of $6,518. The Flood Control District Fund has an overall balance of $1,357,981, with an investment amount of just a little bit over half a million dollars. Jail District Fund has an overall balance of $1,364,441, with an investment amount of just a little bit over a million dollars. Total for all funds, overall balance $43,345,074, with an investment amount of $13,643,000, for an estimated end-of-the-month balance of $13,918,892.
Okay, any questions? No. Supervisor Malarra, you good?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Chavez. I hear a motion to move into Flood Control.
I will go ahead and move that we recess regular session and convene in the Flood Control District.
A second.
Okay, a motion and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We are now in Flood Control. Angie, good morning.
Morning, Angie.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Good news is, we had rain.
Speak into the mic, please.
Is it on?
Yeah, it's on. Yeah, okay, it was probably too far. Good morning, good morning, everyone. The good news is, we actually did have some rainfall, and it was significant amount. On Wednesday, they told me that we had received 25.18 inches of rain. And on Friday, when they reran it for the 30th, we had gone up to 33.85 inches. So, we did really, really well, and this is just the county only. The overall watershed, the first time they gave it to me, it was 35.7, and it ended up being 45.48. So, we did really good overall, picking up a significant amount of rain. Most of the items haven't changed. I know, so sorry about that. We haven't been moving along. The only thing that was of significance was that the Ben Sejo Gordiun is now finally approved and is on our web already. So, if anyone logs into it, they can already get the most current accurate data on that. And moving right along to the final part, we had 225 flood hazard information sheets that were submitted. Out of that, 33 for the City of Nogales, 12 were for the Town of Patagonia, and 180 were for the county. And we received eight flood plain use permits, one was for the City of Nogales, and seven were for unincorporated Santa Cruz County. One drainage report, and who am I missing here? And I did talk to the Town of Patagonia. They said that they would talk to the mayor, and they would email me something if they had it, and as of today, they haven't emailed me anything. I also spoke to City of Nogales with Juan Guerra, and he also mentioned that as soon as he had something, he would either present it himself or give me something in writing.
Okay.
Any questions, gentlemen?
No questions. So, I get to ask you the fun questions, a monthly report from the City of Nogales?
Well, they didn't give me anything but for, for, I think I told you, they had 12 requests for the flood plain, for the flood hazard information sheets. They had...
They didn't, so they didn't give you, they didn't give you a report?
I know what it means. No, they didn't do a report. He's actually on vacation, and the only thing he did mention for me that he, I think he's looking for funding for their north, for North Ho-Hokum Drive, because their road is kind of falling into the wash, literally. Their guardrail is already gone.
Okay.
So, that's what they're doing, and that's all that I know, because that's all he told me.
All right, and any report from the Town of Patagonia?
No.
Okay, and is there any public comment in the Flood Control District? Anybody like to address us as the Flood Control Board? See, nobody rushing up to the podium?
Mr. Chairman, just, I know that there were a few trees that were down yesterday because of the storm. There was one on Grand Avenue, right on?
On the city?
On the Food City, and then the other one was on Morley. There was a lot of debris. There was a lot of rain that came down quickly yesterday, so it did that. And I know that Jesus Leonard, who's the gentleman that kind of talked to them about that project on Ho-Hokum?
Ernest.
Ernest. So, we have been in contact with them, and we suggested to them what they needed to do to go out. I mean, we identified who owns what, what needs to be done, and so, we've worked with them. So, I know there was a story in the newspaper that pretty much said that nobody had done anything, but I will tell you that we've sat down and we've met with them to give them some of the ideas to move forward, and I tried to identify some funding areas so that they could apply for them. So, it is needed, and hopefully, you know, they'll be able to get that done and fixed. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Nobody for public comment, so...
I will move to adjourn our Flood Control District and convene into the Jail District.
And motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously. Item one, discussion, possible action for authorization to fill three vacant detention Officer One positions?
Move to approve, and they're budgeted for.
Second.
And a motion and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously. Item two, discussion, possible action to approve and amend the professional services contract between Advance Correctional Healthcare, Inc. and the Jail District, renew the agreement for medical services for adult males in the amount of $672,435.39 from July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item three, discussion, possible action to approve intergovernmental agreement for adult detention services with the Town of Rural Valley.
Move to approve, and then just a question.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, and under discussion, Supervisor Reese.
Yeah, so, to our legal staff, Jim, have you looked over the agreement and everything?
I have.
Everything good?
It's good.
It's a sound agreement? Good, okay, thank you. That's all I need. Thank you.
Supervisor Malarra, do you have any questions?
No, sir.
Madam Manager. So, the Jail District and funding for the Jail District, is how are we doing with accepting additional inmates?
The inmates that would come from the Town of Rural Valley should, will more than likely be minimal, and so, it does not require any additional staffing as a result. So, it is a good move financially for us, because it could bring in revenue without additional costs, other than meals. You know, there's a few additional costs, but...
And the revenue, and the additional revenue doesn't put at risk card on our bonds?
It does not.
Okay, terrific. That's the most important one. I'd like to congratulate the sheriff on getting this done. So, have any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously.
I will move to adjourn our Jail District and convene into regular session.
Second.
Now, the motion is second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Is there someone here from the food bank? Okay, so, we'll have to pass on that item one. Item two, discussion, possible action for authorization to fill, A, vacant Deputy Sheriff position, B, four vacant Public Telehealth Communicator position, C, a vacant Lead Public Safety Telecommunicator position, and D, a vacant Safety Telecommunicator Supervisor position.
Move to approve, and they're all budgeted for.
Second.
And motion and a second, and the question was, these are all in the budget? Thank you, Madam Manager. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously. Item three, discussion, possible action to approve reappointment of Dean Davis to the Board of Adjustment member for District Three.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you very much, Mr. Davis, for volunteering. Item four, discussion, possible action to accept the Arizona Criminal Justice Division Drug, Gang, and Violent Crime Award, number DC-23-011, in the amount of $21,252.34.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the motion carries. Item five, discussion, possible action to approve subrecipient agreement, number 19-AZDOHS-OPSG-190427-03, with the Arizona Department of Homeland Security for Operation Stone Garden Grant Program Award reallocation for radar guns in the amount of $20,224.81 for FFY 2019.
So moved.
Second.
And motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the motion carries unanimously. Item six, discussion, possible action to approve contract for services with Constructing Circles of Peace from April 1st, 2022 through March 30th, 2025, in the amount of $15,000, 5,000 yearly for the Justice of the Peace.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item seven, discussion, possible action to approve amendment for professional services agreement KR21-0029, renewing contract with Constructing Circles of Peace for pretrial assessments and supervision services for Justice of the Peace and Superior Court from July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2023.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Just, how is this funded? Through the courts? Jennifer? Because there's no amount there, so, I mean, there's a cost associated to do that.
Yes, sir. It's funded through the court's budgets, and I know there's court employees here, too. Supervisor Reese have...
No, I'm just curious, because I know we just had one, and then this one is just, they do all that for the court, so, so it is, it's budgeted under the court's budget. Okay, that's all I need. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Reese. Supervisor Malarra, any questions?
No, sir.
I like that backdrop you got going behind you. Switched that, switched that up during the meeting on me. So, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
And the motion carries. Item eight, discussion, possible action to approve AZ Tech Field Trainer Grant Application for fiscal year 2023, effective July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023, in the amount of $25,000.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item 19, discussion, possible action to approve intergovernmental agreements for the youth project starting June 21st, 2022 through September 30th, 2022.
Move to approve.
There's A and B.
Second.
A and B.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously. Discussion, possible action to approve amended emergency voting procedure pursuant to ARS 16-542.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion?
No, Susie's back there, if we have any questions.
Is Susie back there?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you very much.
Hi, Susie.
Hi there.
Could you come up and tell everybody what we're doing?
Yes, sir.
It is voting, so we want to let everybody know.
Of course. Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me, and members of the board?
Good morning.
And good morning to the public. Yes, and so, this is for the emergency voting. This takes place on the Monday before the election, in case there's an emergency, that if somebody, for unforeseen circumstances, had an emergency, an illness, or something that happened, that they couldn't make it to the polls, then they would be, or to the voting centers, then they would be able to vote early in our office on Monday between 8:00 and 5:00 p.m. on Monday, the day before the election, which would be August 1st. Okay, very good. All right, thank you. And also, I just want to announce and tell everybody that our voting center, usually we have held our early voting in the Recorder's Office in Room 101, but now they're going to be, it's been moved to the second floor, Room 202, which is the former courtroom A. So, just so the public will know, please.
Okay.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, and motion carries unanimously. Item 11, discussion, possible action to approve intergovernmental agreement with Arizona County's Insurance Pool, ACIP, to provide insurance and insurance services relating to the exposures of property, fidelity, employment, employer's liability, workers' compensation, liability losses, and other losses as may be permitted by law pursuant to ARS 11952 and 11952.01, from July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2032.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously. Item 12, discussion, possible action to approve a service rental agreement with Prudential Overall Supply to supply uniform garments for the Maintenance Department.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Madam Manager, do you think that one could go with the way of the copier-lease programs?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item 13, discussion, possible action to adopt fiscal year, oop, we're going to do that one at the end. Item 14, I'm going to circle it so I don't forget. Item 14, discussion, possible action to approve recreation or public purposes lease, number AZA4413-01, with the Arizona State, excuse me, with the United States Department of the Interior Bureau of Land Management for the Sonora Elgin landfill, in the amount of $2,000 for a period of 25 years.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion?
That's a good bargain for two grand for 25 years, right?
You're a tough negotiator.
[laughing]
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
And motion carries. Item 15, discussion, possible action to approve the donation of a vehicle to Santa Cruz Valley Unified School District, number 35, for the communications specialist.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Shannon, you have a car. This, item 16, discussion, possible action to adopt and approve Resolution 2022-11, canceling precinct committee election for August 2nd, 2022 primary election and appointing candidates that filed as deemed elected.
So moved.
Second.
And motion and a second, and under discussion. Madam Manager?
Mr. Chairman, when we have the exact number of candidates that file as openings that we have, we're able to cancel the election and just appoint those candidates that filed. So, this is, that is what this action item is doing.
Okay. Thank you for clearing that, for clarifying that. We just want to make sure everybody understands, because it has to do with elections. So, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item 17, discussion, possible action to approve the appointment of the election boards for the August 2nd, 2022 primary election, and allow Elections Department to fill vacancies as needed.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, under discussion. Madam Manager?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, in the packets, we have the positions that are being approved today. The Elections Department has to do things such as, we have an inspector and a marshal at each vote center or election place, and those have to be different parties. Then the other poll workers that are in each area, each vote center, need to be equally made up of Republican and Democrats. So, again, in the packet, we have all that information. We currently have one vacancy, and so, that's why there's an action item there that's authorizing you all to allow the Elections Director to fill that vacancy as we find somebody. So, that's really all I have on the background. If you have any questions, I can try to answer them. It's not my strong suit, but I'll be happy to try.
Oh, I heard you were one of the heffes at one of the voting centers, so I think you know a lot. One of the interesting questions is, is so you only have Republicans and Democrats, and that is because?
So, there are other parties that are on here, but the only two recognized parties are Republican and Democrats in Santa Cruz County. parties are Republican and Democrats in Santa Cruz County. Um, I also forgot to just mention that we have had several meetings with both the Republican and the Democratic Chair or their representatives, so they have been very, um, active in leading up to these appointments and, and different, the process that we're gonna go through. Our county attorney, our recorder's office, and our Elections Department have had, uh, multiple meetings with those individuals.
Okay. Thank you very much for that explanation. So we have a motion and a second. Are there any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Item eighteen, discussion possible action, recommendation of approval for application for liquor license for Los Melex Winery in Elgin.
Everything in order, Liz?
Yes, everything is in order.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, and motion carries unanimously. Good luck to Los Melex. Item nineteen, discussion possible action on the recommendation for approval of special event license application for the Santa Cruz County Humane Society on ten one twenty-two. It says to McCackery.
Move to approve. Everything in order.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion?
Everything in order.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. They can have their event. Item twenty, tax valuation adjustments A through E.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item twenty-one, approval of minutes. Six twenty-one twenty-two.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item twenty-two, demands.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to go ahead and move that we approve the, the demands as follows for fiscal year twenty-two, which ended on June thirtieth. Uh, the amount from the, was one million, four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, fifty-two dollars and seventy-three cents, of which general fund was two hundred and seventy-one thousand, three hundred and twenty-two ninety-one. And starting on July first for fiscal year twenty-three, uh, thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty-six cents, of which general fund is twenty-five thousand and fifty-four dollars and sixty-five cents, for a total of one million, four hundred and seventy-five thousand, nine hundred and ninety-one dollars and twenty-nine cents, of which two hundred and ninety-six thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifty-six cents are from the general fund.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we can pay our, our bills. We're gonna go back to item thirteen, which is discussion possible action to adopt fiscal year 2022, 2023 tentative budget. Madam Manager? Or Mauricio, who wants to take that one on?
Good morning again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Good morning, Mauricio.
I'll be, I'll be presenting the tentative, uh, budget for you. I would like to start off by thanking the Board of Supervisors for their continued support, and all elected officials and department heads for keeping all expenditures within their respective budgets. I would also like to thank County Manager Ms. St. John and HR Director Ms. Jones for their assistance and support during the, the budget process. The county continues to be proactive with federal and state grants. We recently received our second payment for the ARPA allocation, as well as the school superintendent's office received five point eight million dollars from the Department of Education through ARPA, um, funding as well. An additional one point eight million dollars related grants, COVID-related grants, which allows us to offset many expenditures from the general fund, has also been received for the county. Additional fourteen million dollars in grant funding for capital projects, including the Ephraim, Ephraim Canyon Project and for airport improvements will begin in FY twenty-three. I would like to start with, uh, I have the budget, budget book there. I tabbed it for you for the, um, different schedules, and we'll start with Schedule A. I'll go briefly over certain of the schedules, and then I'll stop at the end of each schedule if you have any, any specific questions. For Schedule A, the summary schedule of estimated revenues and expenditures for FY twenty-three. The general fund has budgeted expenditures for FY twenty-three are forty million, three thousand, five hundred dollars. For the current year that we, we're currently, we ended for FY twenty-two, they were thirty-five million, five hundred, twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven. Special revenue funds, budgeted expenditures for FY twenty-three are sixty-five million, one hundred, eighty-four thousand, two hundred and thirty-one. These are mostly federal grants and state grants, and are projections of anticipated funding, including the ARPA grants and, and COVID nineteen-related funding. Debt service funds, but, excuse me, budgeted expenditures for FY twenty-three are nine hundred, three thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven. For FY twenty-two, they were five, nine hundred and five thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven. It's a decrease due to administrative fees. The large one, the large increase that we have is the capital, uh, project funds. Budgeted expenditures for FY twenty-three were targeting fifteen million, six, three hundred, sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven dollars. For FY twenty-two, our budgeted expenditures were three million, one hundred, seventy-three dollars, seventy-three thousand, two hundred and ninety-three. The difference is, that's the Ephraim Canyon, uh, project, and then the airport projects, which are, are multiple airport, airport projects that are gonna begin in FY twenty-three. The enterprise fund, budgeted expenditures for FY twenty-three are ten million, three hundred, seven thousand, nine hundred and sixty-one. For FY twenty-two, they were nine million, six hundred, fourteen thousand, four hundred and seventy. This is an increase due to the savings for closure and port close, post-closure costs for the landfill. So for Schedule A, total for all funds, for FY twenty-three, budgeted expenditures are a hundred and thirty-one million, seven hundred, sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six. For FY twenty-two, the total adopted budget expenditures were a hundred and eleven thousand, five hundred, ninety-six thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven. The variance is gonna be due to the federal and state grants that we anticipate in receiving. That, that's Schedule A. If you have any specific questions, Mr. Chairman, members of the board?
No questions.
Going down to.
Do you have any questions?
Yes, sir.
You're good? Okay. Go ahead, Mauricio.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Schedule B, we have the summary of tax levy and tax information. So overall, our tax revenue has been increasing on an average compared to last year. Our, our local shares, uh, sales tax, state share sales tax have, has remained pretty much the same as previous, as it's a previous year. However, many economists and researchers predict a recession likely in 2023, and in addition, everyday costs to provide county services have increased. Overall, we were able to hold the line on controllable expenses. However, we are facing state mandated expenses, including state retirement cost increases, healthcare cost increases, liability insurance cost increase, and then all tech contribution increase. For a projected estimated cost, approximately about seven hundred and fifty thousand of projected increases that we're gonna face this coming year. Cognizant of the current recession forecast, staff is not recommending a proper tax increase for this coming year. Staff is recommending keeping the property tax rate at four point zero five one five, the same as fiscal year 2022. However, even if we do keep the tax rate at the same, uh, rate as last year, due to an increase in overall's, uh, assessed values, our primary and secondary taxes will be affected. So this translates to a primary tax levy amount of fifteen million, seven hundred, ninety-six thousand, three hundred and twenty-one dollars, which is about a, about five hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar increase from last year. Keep in mind that per AR, ASRS forty-two dash seventeen ten, the maximum allowable primary property tax levy amount for this year is nineteen million, two hundred, twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven. So with an overall assessed value to increase, that would be about an eight dollar and thirty-two annual increase on a home valued at a hundred thousand dollars, on an average tax bill. However, if the property tax value didn't go up, that tax rate will not change, only for tax, uh, for property tax owners that their tax went up. Similar to the ta, primary tax rate, staff is not recommending an increase for the secondary tax rate. The proposed secondary tax rate for FY twenty-three is point eight one zero three cents, same as FY twenty-two. That would be an, a dollar and fifty-four annual increase on a home valued at a hundred thousand dollars. So keeping both primary and secondary tax rate the same as FY twenty-two represents a nine dollar, eighty-six per year increase on a hundred thousand dollar value home, or about eighty-two cents per month increase. That only will go up if the property, if the assessed property value changes for the property owner. Do you have any questions on Schedule B? It's from Chairman, members of the board.
Supervisor Reese?
No, not at this time. I think it's a good idea that we keep the tax rate the same, especially, uh, given that, uh, I, I agree with your statement of recession, and especially as we look at the, I think I better put this closer so people can hear. So anyway, as I was saying, I agree with, uh, your, you know, assertion that, uh, we probably are in a recession, not going to go into recession, but I think it's a good idea that we maintain stability, especially given the fact that, uh, gasoline continues to rise. We're fortunate in O'Gallas that it's not as expensive as it is in Tucson or Phoenix, uh, but there's still a lot of supply issues. Uh, I know whether it's baby formula, or, uh, you know, concrete, or steel, or lumber. I mean, we need to, to, to hold tight with what we have and not, uh, try to pass on any other costs to, to our public. They're, they're getting hit pretty hard, as we all are, so. Thank you for that, Mauricio. Those are my comments, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Supervisor Malera?
Mr. Chair, I, uh, pretty much agree with, uh, Mauricio and Supervisor Reese, that we're, uh, definitely going through uncertain times right now. A, a lot of issues with supply and demand, so I, I definitely agree with that, with keeping, uh, our, uh, tax rate as is. And, uh, Mauricio, thank you for all your due diligence. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Mauricio.
Yes, sir. Moving on, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, to Schedule C. That would be the summary of fund type of revenue other than the property tax. So the general fund has estimated revenues for FY twenty-three are at fourteen million, two hundred thousand, nine hundred and fifteen. The estimated revenues for FY twenty-two were twelve million, nine hundred, eighty-two thousand, six hundred and ninety. And our, so far, our actual revenues are seventeen million, four hundred, eighty-seven thousand, eight, and eighty-nine dollars, which we still have accruals pending. Now, those, those, those revenues include the SR one eighty-nine project. That's why you see a little bit of a, of a higher amount there. Uh, that project has concluded, and everything has gone back to normal, so we won't see those revenues again coming forward. That's why our projected revenues are at fourteen million coming up for this year. On page four of, of Schedule C, we have special revenue funds. So the total for special, estimated for special revenues are at thirty-seven million, two hundred, forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty-eight. For FY twenty-two, estimated revenues were pretty similar at thirty-seven thousand, forty-six, uh, thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight. Total for all funds for FY twenty-three, estimated revenues, sixty-eight million, four hundred, seventy-four thousand and three dollars. For FY twenty-two, our estimated revenues were a little bit lower at fifty-four million, nine hundred and seven thousand, five hundred and forty, and forty-four. We are, however, still have, uh, two months of, of accruals that we're receiving, uh, revenues from the previous year. Any questions, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board on Schedule C?
Well, just a comment, Mr. Chairman, if I may. I mean, we were fortunate. We got CARES dollars from the, from the state, uh, year before, and this year, we got the ARPA money to really help stabilize our financial situation, and, uh, because we're stuck with an expenditure limit, even though we had some funds, we weren't able, we wouldn't have been able to spend them. But because we did, I think financially, we're, we're probably a little bit ahead of, of the game, but there's still some issues there that we'll probably discuss after your presentation as to, uh, what we might be able to do, because, uh, we would've had to, been scrambling if we hadn't received the CARES dollars from the state or the ARPA money. And as you mentioned, we got the other four and a half million dollars here, uh, to do that, and, and the good thing about that is we were able to plug it into some areas, not the retirement, because that's not, not part of what the dollars were for, but for, for other expenses that we had that, that were related to, to many of the COVID and other issues that we have. So it was both a blessing, but as we move forward, uh, you know, things are gonna be a little bit different, because we won't probably have that safety blanket next year, and it doesn't look, I mean, the way things are happening at the state, and the way things are happening in the federal government, you know, we're really gonna have to tighten our belts, and, and, and kind of reminds me of the two thousand and eight, is that one, our first really big recession hit, and we had to make substantial cuts and lay people off, and I hope it doesn't get to that. So, anyway. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Malera?
I'm good, sir.
Okay. I think, you know, the acknowledgement that, that we did get, you know, the federal money either directly from the feds or through the state has really helped us with our budgets the last couple of years. Also, that has helped us was the construction of the one eighty-nine flyover, because literally the ports of entry were closed. Our sales tax revenue went down significantly, and if it had not been for the construction revenue, the tax on the construction revenue, it would've, it would've hurt us. We've also been kinda propped up with the, all the other, with the housing construction. There's been a big, a lot of housing projects that have happened in our community, so. There's a lot of good things to pull out of this report, so Mauricio, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, moving, moving on to Schedule D. So Schedule D is just the summary of inter-fund transfers in and out. That's basically our mandated requirements from the jail district, environmental health fund, animal control, and then the matches that we have for, for the grants as well are in the, on Schedule D. Schedule E, that's a summary by department of expenditures within each type of fund. So again, like we reviewed in Schedule A, uh, the budgeted expenditures there for the general fund are forty million, three thousand, five hundred. The rest of the Schedule E provides a breakdown of by fund type, and I can, if you have specific questions, I can go over those if, if, if you need be. Schedule F, that again provides the breakdown of expenditures by department. If you have any specific questions on any department, how they, how each department's affected on their expenditures, that's Schedule F, if you have any questions. Schedule G, that's the full, full-time employee and personnel compensation. Schedule G provides the number of full-time equivalent and compensation related to the fund. For the general fund, the full-time, um, equivalents or FTEs is at two hundred and seventeen. Salary costs are, are at eleven million, six hundred and fifty-one thousand, plus employee-related expenses. The rest of Schedule G provides the employee costs associated for other funds as well. And now that we're at the Schedule G, uh, staff is also making a recommendation to, uh, provide, uh, in a, in a continued effort to retain and reward employees, and as well as recruit professional talent, the budget includes a six percent, uh, salary increase across the board for all employees as well.
Okay.
And if you have any specific questions on, on Schedule G or about the increase, I'm more than glad to, uh, address that.
Supervisor Reese, do you have any questions?
No, not at this time, uh, but I will make some comments when we're done.
Okay. Supervisor Malera?
I'm good for now.
Okay. I'd just like to point out that the FTE full, full-time equivalent number in this year's budget, two hundred and seventeen, is the same as last year's budget. Um, when you're talking about a six percent cost of living increase, that is very close to what Social Security Administration gave, um, earlier this year, um, to their, to their retirees. And so I think we're pretty much in line with what is happening. I know that there are other counties in the state that are doing significantly more than what we're able to do, but I think that, you know, with what we did last year, what we're doing this year, um, we're, we're doing what's good for our budget and, and our people, so. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. The last page, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, it's the twenty-twenty-two levy limit worksheet. Just to address that, you know, uh, the, the Department of Revenue, our maximum levy amount is, it's at nineteen million, two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, and we're, we're not even close to that levy amount. We're, we're requesting fifteen million. We'll get to that amount real quick here. Fifteen million, seven hundred and ninety-six thousand, so well below the, the maximum allowable.
And I think we've always been very conservative when it comes to always tax and spend the people's money, uh, even though we're the stewards that are required to do that, so.
Correct.
Great.
Supervisor?
Thank you.
Sorry.
Mr. Mr. Chair, it's, it's funny, but I just written down conservatively responsible, and I, uh, wanna piggyback off Supervisor Reese, uh, Vice Chairman's comments, because, uh, I thank staff and, and, and our board has always looked out for employees and, at the same time, been conservatively responsible. And I, I thank, uh, Jennifer and, uh, staff for, um, coming up with that six percent, uh, raise for employees, because all private has raised, as you've seen, and we're just trying to keep up with the rest, and, and I thank all for, for doing this. And those are my comments, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. So Mauricio, thank you very much. Do you have anything else you wanna add to this?
Mr. Chairman, members- Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I do not, that concludes my presentation, but I'm here to answer any questions for the board.
Supervisor Reese?
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mauricio, good job, and I also want to thank Judge Fink, we met here last week on, on an issue that pertains to some of his employees, and I think we worked something out so that they would, would also receive the six percent. You know, there's going to be a lot of things coming forward, and if this tentative budget is approved today, when we have the hearing to approve the budget, we can't raise it. We can lower it, but we can't raise it. And it has been mentioned today, we're going to have to be very careful with how we spend the taxpayer dollars. And I, you know, as, as we move forward, there's going to be some things that I would like to see put in there. We're going to have to revisit all our, our dues that we pay to the various, see how necessary they are, because I think it's important that we're fiscally responsible after hearing that we may have a three point five million dollar expenditure limit issue, and I know Jennifer's going to be working with Mauricio to try to find a way to address that, and hopefully she'll be able to, but if not, we're going to have to, to make those decisions. At some point, we would probably have to go back to what we did in two thousand and eight, and that would be that the board would approve all out-of-state travel, doesn't matter if it's board members, any other member of any other, because I think that we, as leaders of this community, have to be on the forefront, and we need to make those sacrifices as well as our community. I mean, our community right now, they're hurting, not just here in O'Gallas, but all across the state and all across the nation. So those are some of the things that we're going to have to look at. I don't want us to get to the point where we have to lay off people, especially if we're giving a raise. I want to do everything that we can to make sure that we're able to meet all the obligations to be able to keep our staff gainfully employed and moving forward. My hope is that this recession will not last as long as the one in two thousand and eight, because that hurt a lot of people, but at the end of the day, this board is going to really have to make those tough decisions, and I think that if, if we go that route, that I think it'll go a long way to show the community that we're trying to feel the pain just like they are. So those are my comments, Mr. Chairman, and I, I really appreciate the time. I want to thank Mauricio again for working along with Sonia and Jennifer and figuring out some of the items, especially for our employees. I've always said that our employees are our biggest asset, and we need to find a way to, to keep them and not lose them, because I know that Public Works has lost some great grader operators over the year, and when we do things in-house, it makes it a lot better, and there's a lot of great employees that, that have been here for a long time that have really committed their whole lives to it, and I think it's, it's important that we show them that we appreciate their hard work, so.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes, thank you. Thank you. Supervisor Malera? Any comments?
Mr. Chair, I just want to briefly thank staff, Jennifer, Mauricio, Sonia, all involved, and all the departments, because all the departments have continuously been great team players, and I agree with Supervisor, Vice Chairman Reese, that we are going to need to be cautious and be well aware of what's going on here in the next year or so, because it's going to be a rough ride, and hopefully it won't be as, as bad as two thousand eight, two thousand nine, when I started. Those were really, really tough times, and we had to make really, really, really hard decisions, and I hope it doesn't get to that point. Again, thanks, thanks staff, thank you Mauricio for the presentation, and that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. I'd also like to echo the comments of my two boardmates, and thanking the elect, the other elected officials for coming in with lean budgets. You didn't add a lot of personnel, you didn't try to add a bunch of programs, you're just trying to deliver the services within the confines of the budget that we do have. It, yeah, this upcoming fiscal year is going to be challenging for all of us, as every fiscal year is, but there are also a lot of opportunities for our communities, so we just need to work to take advantage of those things. And so Mauricio, thanks to you, Jennifer, and everybody else who had input and worked on crunching these numbers and getting us this document. And so I guess I will read item thirteen. So we had a motion, a second, discussion, possible action to adopt the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three, tentative budget.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
And we have a motion, a second, and all those in favor?
Just under discussion, when are we adopting our final budget?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, our target date is August the third, and we're going to have the, the budget presentation, as well as the truth and taxation public hearing, and then the budget presentation after that. So as, as soon as the board approves, I get to work and continue so I can start publishing in the newspaper.
Great, yeah, I think it's important that the public knows when we're adopting our final budget.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay. So we have the motion, a second, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously. Madam Manager, I'd like to, on item number one of the agenda, presentation from the food bank, we need to get in touch with the food bank and see when they can come and make that presentation. I think that's the best way to handle that item, and I think that concludes.
Mr. Chairman, I will go ahead and move that we adjourn our meeting.
I will gladly second.
I have a motion, a second, any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, and we are adjourned.